Goodie colors in the desk.
Should we wait for Jewel? No. I've got so much papers, I don't know where I am here. Let's go ahead and have our public hearing. Good morning, everybody. We've got a public hearing to start the meeting today. It's a road name request for Whopper Wheel Drive Beaver Creek Township. W C, do you need to say anything during the, for the public hearing or just when we actually come up except the, or we do the road name request itself? Okay. Any, does anyone have any public comment on this road naming request with Whopper Wheel Drive up there at Beaver Creek? Okay. Not having anyone to recognize to speak either for or against this road name request, I'll, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing when we'll go ahead and call our regular meeting to order. This is the March ninth, 2018, meeting of the Wilkes County Commissioners. I welcome everybody, glad everybody's here. We will start the meeting with an invocation by Commissioner David Gamble and we'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance if everybody would please stand.
I just pray, I'm gonna follow Lord, just thank you for beautiful day and another day you give to us. Thank you for your guidance and your wisdom and that's, that's continue to lead us guide us in direction, be pleased if you'd be with us throughout the year and look at everyone in the county and all who wants to sit and all these blessings, I send Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anything else? Let's see, before we go on to, I'll tell you what, let's go ahead and approve the minutes, get that out of the way, that's always usually pretty non-conroversial.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I know there's no mistakes in there, so all in favor, please say aye, raise your hand. All right, the minutes are approved, Sarah. Okay. Now, before we go to E, I'd like to recognize a special guest and friend of mine. Dalton Jessup. Dalton, would you stand up just for a second, please, everybody? Good morning Dalton.
Morning.
Dalton is a senior at North High. He's doing his senior project, I believe it's required for each senior to complete a project before graduation. Dalton's subject matter for his senior project was shadowing a politician. So, I told him to get in touch with Eddie because he's the best one I knew, but he followed me around and we've been sharing some time together and doing some activities that are part of a typical schedule for a county commissioner and we've had a great time. He's a, he's a super guy, I tell you, really, when, when you meet somebody like Dalton, it is very encouraging that there is a bright future for, for the county. He's gonna be going on to the community college and, and he's just a super guy. He's the son of Donnie and Stephanie Jessup. And his girlfriend, and he's made a tremendous sacrifice to be here today. His girlfriend Avery Wood is on the North High girls' basketball team, which is leaving today at about 10:30, I believe, the superintendent mentioned to me. They're leaving for Chapel Hill to play in the state finals tomorrow at noon at the Dean Dome. So, he's here this morning to fulfill his requirements for his senior project and I'm very proud of him. He's, he's a super guy, it's been really nice to get to know him. He's got good values, you can tell that his parents have done some, some good work and I wish him the best of luck and I'd like everybody to maybe welcome him, give him a hand for, for his efforts. I asked him if he wanted to say anything and he said he'd just let, let me do the talking, so. But Dalton, thank you and look forward to your graduation and, and your success in the future. All right, we'll move on to item E. It's the Tax Department, tax releases, Alex Hamilton, our esteemed tax administrators here. Alex, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Always good to see ya.
Thank you very much, good to be here. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here to make, to request permission to make the releases that you have in front of you and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. The majority, it looks like the majority of these are properties that were failed to be coded land use and that's human error.
Commissioner Almore, you got any questions? Jumped out at ya?
That's Sarah, that's a lot of land use.
We get a lot of applications.
What can we do to eliminate this error? Or help us take the steps, I'm sure you've...
It's just, yeah, people that failed to code it land use. That program's massive and, and you know, it almost deserves a full-time job just to handle that program and I've got people just handling it the best they can, but they have so many other responsibilities, you know, things happen. But the, the program is almost deserving of a full-time position to, to handle it.
You could say it's shorthand.
You could say.
Maybe not particular.
Well, I'm just saying, when, when you're talking about a program that, that is $600 million from your tax base, is it deferred? Then that's a lot.
But it's, that's part of the state statute.
Yes, yes.
State tax code, right?
Yes, yes.
So, it's something we have to administer based on, the state has mandated that we do.
Oh, yeah.
I know Commissioner Minton wanted to ask a couple of questions. How many parcels do we have in one scan?
Do what now?
How many parcels do we have in one scan?
About fifty, over, little bit over 50,000 now.
Alex, this, this failed to code, is this near Charlotte?
Do what now?
We have a company in Charlotte that collects bills and collects taxes.
No, we use a lot box service. It's a, yeah, the bills go to a lot box service through First Citizens Bank and...
Who, I mean, we don't have anyone in Charlotte, we don't contract with anybody to do any billing or...
Not that I'm aware of.
I just left Economic Development and a guy, said they talked to you. He said, "I got a late notice," he said, "I paid my taxes." And he said, "When I came up here, they said, 'No, you've got a late notice,'" and he said they were collecting in Charlotte and that that company down there credited another county with his taxes. They paid, he said they straightened it out, but he said, "Why don't we create a job here in the county for somebody to do that?" And I said, "I, I don't know as much as I need to know about it."
It's a lot box service and, and it's through First Citizens Bank who the county's banked with for years and basically the mail goes there, excuse me, they process the mail for us and it automatically goes into our, our account, right, you know, as they process it, it's credited to our account. We get a database from them every morning and we process the database through our software and, and credits everyone, credits the payments. That particular instance was, yeah, there was a, a check lost, a couple of them and but in my, we've been using them eighteen years, seventeen years, we've been using a lot box. We haven't had very many issues with it at all. There is no one locally that provides that service that I'm aware of. There's, you know, so I don't know how we can create jobs unless someone wants to start a lot box company.
Well, I don't know either, but...
I mean, what, the purpose of the lot box was, number one, it got, well, back when interest was an issue, it got the money in the bank a little bit quicker and you were able to get in, you know, a day or two more interest on it. Also, it, it helped ease the, ease the pressure upstairs in the collections office by not having to process that mail. I mean, you know, during the busy months, we would get trays upon trays of mail and it would take six, seven people just to open the things and then sit there and have to process each piece. You know, it took time too, so that's why we went with that service. It's worked well for us, it's fairly inexpensive. You know, it's, it's served its purpose over the years.
How expensive is it?
It's about thirty-two cents a piece.
For a check or for a payment?
So, we don't use it much anymore because of motor vehicles.
Oh, yeah, but that was a...
Yeah, it, I think it's less than five thousand dollars a year.
Well, I understand, I know you've got a, I mean, tax, like, job is, that's a tough job. I get it.
It makes sense to use a, a service for that, for process, every, you know, processing data like that by hand, I mean, it makes sense, I mean, it's logical highly into that. And First Citizens, a fine local, I mean, they've been a fine local bank here for many years and we, that's our primary, primary institution that we do business with as a county as well.
Thirty-two cents a piece, but how much total, do you know Jerry, spend a year?
I just, I just said less, less than five thousand.
Less than five thousand.
Yeah.
So, you got, there's 50,000 parcels of land, we're not doing the vehicles anymore, so you don't, we don't even process checks for them. And a lot of people have, like I said, we have multiple properties you're paying one check on, so I can see five grand would be about fifteen, twenty thousand.
Yeah, it's not that much.
Well, it's information though that you need when you meet somebody and you're sitting on the Economic Development Board and they say, "Why don't you create a job?" And they're quizz, quizzing me about it, you know, and I just left that meeting.
Yeah.
I found out some things for, so it's less than five thousand a year to collect it. I don't think we'll get anybody for five thousand a year to do this.
Last time I checked, it wasn't less than...
I, I mean, I'm, I'm saying, I'm, Commissioner, so I, I, I'm, I'm pulling that from the hat, I'm thinking it's less than five thousand, it used to be, gosh, when we, when we had vehicles, it was fifteen, fourteen to fifteen thousand, but once we lost those motor vehicles, it, it dropped way down. During the normal month, it's less than a hundred dollars a month. The only time we have busy times is like December and January and those months, it's, you know, eleven hundred dollars or so, but it, it's, it's mainly for those times. I mean, it's just because we're...
Things are gonna happen, things are gonna happen, I get that.
And we're, you know, we, we used to have five, five to six people in collections and we only got four now, so you're saving that much, that much money by not having those people running the mail.
Not looking for an exact number, but about how many registered vehicles are there in Wilkes County? Any idea?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I have no idea. We just did the estimated tax base on, and how much was, the vehicles was like 400 million or something? So, I mean, yeah, and, and that number's gone up from what we were looking at from prior years, so it's a sign of people buying cars now or updating their cars or whatnot, so.
David, you good?
Yeah, I'm updating my car. I don't know how they're doing it, but, yeah, I'm good.
All right, do, we need, we need a motion and a second?
I'm making a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion, all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, thanks Alex.
No problem.
Good, good information, yeah. Learn something every day. I was gonna say, he's, he's just his. Item F is from the Planning Department, road name request for Whopper Wheel, Whopper Wheel Drive, Beaver Creek Township for approval. Eddie Barnes, our planning director, is not here today, but we have here in his place Mr. W C Scruggs.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, good morning, W C, good to see you, welcome.
Happy to be here, yeah, on time today, yeah, gonna get started on the right foot today.
Yeah, you're doing a fine job.
So, as y'all know, the Wilkes County Planning Department has received the petition to name the private drive. It's off of North Carolina Highway 268 West in Beaver Creek Township of Wilkes County. Name chosen was Whopper Wheel Drive. As required by the Wilkes County Road Naming Ordinance, the public hearing was held at the beginning of this meeting, no opposition was found, and a ten-day notification period has been met and we would appreciate your consideration on this matter.
I would've thought that name was taken, for some reason.
I haven't heard it.
Yeah.
I believe there's a lane, there's a Whopper Wheel lane, but there's no Whopper Wheel Drive. Just from what I looked up about it.
That's close. I know we talked about having names that are close like Pine Street, Pine Road, sometimes being confusing for EMS.
Have you been to Pinehurst, everything there's a pine?
Yeah, oh gosh, I guess that does get extra confusing.
Pine needles, pine everything.
I can't afford to go down Pinehurst. It's Moore County. Guys, we got a road name request.
Motion to approve.
And a second by Commissioner Gamble, any discussion on this one? All in favor, please raise your hands. W C, have a good day.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Appreciate it. Okay, item G, we've got our update, since we serve in the capacity as the board for the Department of Social Services, as part of our meeting, we have a, a meeting with the Director of DSS, Mr. John Blevins.
Hello, Commissioner Blevins.
Don, welcome to the meeting.
Well, thank you.
Glad to have you and we look forward to hearing your report and, and discussing it with you.
All righty. What we'll do, I've got a few things right at the end I can talk to you about. We can go ahead and start with the numbers first, the monthly caseload report. As you can see on there, the adult Medicaid cases, we had sixty-six hundred and ninety cases from adult Medicaid. The social assistance had a hundred and fifty-one cases. Now, the next line, James flipped those. We don't have eighteen hundred and fifteen family Medicaid cases, I wished we did, but that, that number right below it, eighty-two ninety-seven, is how many family Medicaid cases we have. That eighteen fifteen is the Medicaid transportation that we had for the month. Food nutrition, you can see that, you can see those cases are fifty-seven thirty-six, almost identical to what we had last month, about 1.3 million dollars expended in that. The Lee Appen Sip...
John, a case, is that an individual person?
No.
Or, or fam?
You'd asked last month and, you know, right now in our county, we have fif- fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven Medicaid recipients.
Okay, so...
That's how many recipients. Case can be one or five, six, seven, any number like that.
Okay, yeah, I could, at my age, sometimes you forget what's in there.
I had it for you, I remember you asking.
Yeah, so there's fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven.
Medical.
Actual recep, recipients of...
Medicaid.
Okay.
Yes. The Lee Appen Sip, as I said, you can see, we had six hundred and ninety-one cases or, then January, about thirteen thousand dollars worth of expenditure. We did request an additional five thousand dollars and did receive it this month and Lee App, the state gave counties option to request more funds since we'd expended it. We did get five thousand more dollars to bring into our county. Daycare, and I'll talk more about this when we get to the daycare report, we had two hundred and eighty-four cases. Work first, two hundred and thirty-nine cases. Our child support, thirty-three hundred and eighty cases in January. The APS services were about the same as, in December, we had sixty-seven. We had nineteen investigations, that was down from twenty-eight in adult protective services, which was good. Our CPS case management, we had fifty-nine cases. Our investigations were sixty-eight. That dropped quite a bit from December, as you can see, there was a hundred and seventeen during that month. Our CPS intake reports were eighty-eight. Foster care, still a large number, two hundred and thirty-one children in foster care in our county. And that number has gone down some, thank goodness.
Since January.
Since January, so it has dropped some, but it's still way on up there. Our CPS adoptions, we had two hundred and ninety-two cases in that as well. When you get to the funding part of it, CPS foster care financial report, as you can see, we expended two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in the month of January in foster care. Now, if you looked at December, that was a hundred and forty thousand, some of that was Munis and how it kind of flipped over, so you can kind of average those two out, it's still a large number that we have expended in foster care. I think too, one thing I wanted to come back to real quick, Commissioner Minton had asked last month about what's behind these cases and the increase and we had. I had our workers look for a period of September through February. We had fifty-eight children that entered foster care during that period of time. Seventy-two percent were drugs and DV. Twenty-eight percent were other factors, could be dependency, lack of housing, inadequate housing, different things along those lines, so as, as we expected, you know, sometimes I think that number's even higher than that, but this is a period of September through February, so seventy-two percent of those cases, those fifty-eight children, were drugs and with DV also in the background of those cases. As you can see, it's, it's a burden. Our adoptions, as you can see on our adoptions, we had thirty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars expended in adoptions, well under budget, no issues with that at all. Our childcare. Childcare, we expended a hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in January. That has still dropped, but it's not due to, some of that is, childcare's like a train. It's hard to start it, it's hard to stop it. It gets to rolling, it's, it's, you can't just hit the brakes and stop it and then when you want to get going, you can't just flip a switch and get it, get it rolling. We are working the waiting list, we are putting on, children on. We have ninety-three percent is our spending coefficient right now. There's currently a hundred and ninety children on the waiting list. But, this shows the work that they're doing, we issued twenty-four new vouchers in the month of February. So, we're putting children on, but we're, what we're having to do is put them on and make sure where our numbers are. We're, we're having to keep track of those numbers, because any money that we expend over the amount that the state and federal government gives us is county expense at the end. So, we, we're having to add them on and do a budget as we're adding each one on. But they are continuing to work the waiting list, they are continuing to put children on, so we are hopefully, you know, getting that waiting list worked down and meeting those needs and that.
The, the quarterly expenditures at the bottom of that page. Of course, the first quarter, that's during the summer, is there just more kids that have to be? I mean, as the law was spent, it looked like at first, and I may be reading this wrong, but then you have to kind of compensate for it, or is that just the trend in, in care because of the seasonality of it?
Look at the actual column, look at the second one down on that. Two hundred and six, that's NC fast. So, that's what created some of that problem. Some of that, we think, will come back to us. We feel like some of those are NC fast errors that state still hasn't resolved. Because when you look at that number compared to all those other numbers, it's an outlier. It doesn't fit. So, that's what bumped it up, but you are correct in the fact that first quarter, you got summer care in there and different things like that that drive up that cost.
And then once school starts, they may, can take them out of there, a lot, some of them.
Some of them go out and it tends to go down. But some of that is an erroneous number due to NC fast and it's, when they first started it, it was, it was a mess.
I, I understand that completely, John. Anybody, any more questions? Okay, Gordon Johnson, thank you.
Okay. The CPS foster care monthly report for January, you can see we had thirteen home studies and assists. We had two TPRs, relinquishments completed. Our adoption cases, we had forty-two adoption cases, we have ten children on the waiting list. We've completed three adoptions, completed one step-parent relative adoption and two hundred and ninety-two adoption assistance cases when two unlicensed homes. There's thirty foster homes in our county, we received two applications. We licensed one this month and we had one MAP family trained. On the next page there, the total number.
With the advertising for the foster parents, is, are you seeing the numbers growing? We're staying at thirty and, you know, we're only licensed one. What can we do on our end, is there anything we can do on our end to speed that process up to help these people?
We're trying and that has, you're correct, very correct, that number's hovered right around there almost for a year or so. But we have a new plan that we've presented. One of the things we're thinking about doing is trying different things other than the billboards. You know, we're gonna try to put ads in our movie theaters, you know, like that. We're working with local churches, trying to get more information out on that. It's, it seems like when we gain some, we lose some. It is, we put a few on and then we lose a few. And then some of the ways that we lose them though is a good way, it's people adoption, people adopt. And that's, that's what, that's awesome, that's what we want. But we do have a plan that we're working and we're, we're striving to get it up there, because it is, the more, the better. Because, you know, this last influx that we talked about last month that we had, all those children that came in, due to the lack of foster homes, we've had to put some of them in expensive placements and high-dollar placements and that is a burden, you know, not only on them, because they're out of our county, they're not in our school system where we want them to be, but also is a financial burden as well.
And as far as licenses, if I just say I want to become a licensed foster parent, how long, how many hours would it take me to achieve that?
I'd be afraid to say right off the bat, but it's thirty-some, I believe, somewhere around in there, like that. But we work, you know, Jason Gossip is the person that they would contact at our office, we work with, with them. We've tried to do everything we can to assist them, meet them at their times. I mean, we've adjusted the times we'll hold a MAP class, anything we can do to help, help individuals come into it, because we've really, we really need them and I mean, it is a burden, not only on our children, but on the, on the county as well.
Can you refresh my memory about what MAP stands for?
Uh, let's see. Something parenting.
Oh, good, well, okay, that's close enough.
I can't tell you, because I, we have so many acronyms, I'd be afraid to say, I don't say it wrong.
It just seems like everybody speaks and those, and somebody only knows what they mean.
Basically, it's training, it is the training to be, to become a foster parent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. As you can see on the next page there, the total number of active foster care cases was two hundred and forty-nine. We had seven monitoring cases, eleven VPAs, that's the eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds and we're getting more of those in, we're, more and more of our children that are aging out of foster care at eighteen are signing up to become eighteen, twenty-one-year-olds, those VPAs, which is good. I mean, that's, that's what the state intended, is to give them an extra time until they become twenty-one to transition into, you know, life from where they've come out of foster care. So, two hundred and thirty-one's the total number of children in foster care. A hundred and thirty-three were for E-funding, eighty-eight state, nine was not determined. We had the eleven VPAs that we pay for, seven were monitoring. In the placements, there's a hundred and forty-nine placements. Seventy-four were outside of our county, seventy-five, I mean, excuse me, I said that backwards. Seventy-four are in our county, seventy-five are out, that's finally getting a little closer. You know, sometimes, some months I've been here and they've been pretty skewed the other way, so we're getting that down as best we can, we, because like I said earlier, Commissioner Gamble, we want all of our children to stay in the county as possible. Fifty-three relative kinship placements, nineteen trial placements, which is good. One runaway, eight hospitalizations and a hundred and ninety-four children on links. We have, just this past month, this month actually, we had a adoption committee meeting, so hopefully the adoption number's gonna go way up. So hopefully the adoption number's going to go way up because we had probably thirteen or so that we went through that. So that's really good. And that, that will help with our, um, foster care numbers as well, give them a permanent home. Just a couple of little things here at the end I wanted to mention to you. Um, you can see you have the MAP there, the revised rollout schedule. Um, that's P four, that's the children's. And you can see now what they've done is we're in group four, September twenty-fourth is when we're supposedly to go live. I wouldn't chisel that in any stone or anything just yet, um, because it could change. There's still problems with it. There's still, the pilot counties are still struggling with certain aspects of it. Um, but they've not got worked out. We'll see. Um, but it's, it's a, um, work in progress. And we're trying, right now at this moment in time, we're working to get, um, our technology where it needs to be. And the workers are doing some training, um, in NC fast. They call it a sandbox. They're in the, in the sandbox playing with it. So just be trying to get used to it. But, um, I don't know. We'll see what comes of it. Just one or two other things really quick. You don't have this in your packet. Um, they are proposing regions. This is, some of this is from House Bill six-thirty. They're proposing regions for the, um, counties. They have given us a tentative map of our region. Um, these regions will be basically where the state will have a smaller number of counties to supervise. They're going to have, um, more direct, uh, contact with us, more direct supervision over us. They've left our, um, district in both the, the, um, regions that they proposed to us. We've kept our judicial district intact. Um, one of them is, uh, they have like a region of five and a region of seven. Obviously, the region of five's going to have more counties in it. That one, we go all the way down through Winston-Salem. The smaller region, we're kind of, the counties around us and kind of drops down like toward Gaston County. So we'll see. We've not heard, really heard any feedback either way, um, on that. But, um, you know, used to, a long time ago, they had regions. We had a region out of Winston-Salem that, um, provided support to the counties. They would come up from Winston-Salem and visit quite often, and it, it really worked out well. Um, it'll be interesting to see how this works because the other part of this is, and they've sent out a, um, draft to us to look at. We're going to sign a written agreement with the state, a contract with the state. And it may start July one. That's pretty quick because they've not really finalized anything. I, I can't see how they're going to get it by then. But that's what they're saying.
John, I will say, I had a conversation yesterday with, with the legislative, uh, representatives and I was assured that it will.
They're pushing it.
That, that it's going to be done. Now, I didn't hear the deadline for it, but.
Oh, they're definitely going to do it.
I heard pretty strong terms that this regionalization is coming. However, I was told that it was, uh, voluntary. And I didn't really understand the volun- if you don't sign the contract, you're not in it?
No, there's two different things with that.
Okay.
Um, counties can regionalize if they choose to do so. That's the voluntary part. The regionalization, and really it's confusing the way they've done it. There's a, you can have a regional county department of social services if county wishes to do so.
Okay.
This other part, what I spoke to earlier, is the state says they're going to make regional offices that will provide support, oversight, guidance, and all that other stuff to counties in that region. So they've split the state up into regions.
But those two entities have different boundaries?
Yes.
Is that, is that, that was to your point earlier.
Yeah, they won't split a county.
So the voluntary regionalization that you could go into with others is, is, has different boundaries from the somewhat mandatory oversight of the state that's coming. That's confusing enough right there. Greg?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, with, uh, several of the DSS advocacy groups in Raleigh lobbying on this, they're kind of getting the cart before the horse in a lot of areas, specifically the funding mechanism and plus the voluntary regionalization between the two counties. Because several counties within those proposed regions have wanted to step over each other's region and partner up, especially smaller counties.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, I'm interested to see, and I share your concerns as far as if they can get it done by then. Because honestly, the funding mechanisms for it are not even in place. Yet, yet they're going to be sending out these regions all across the state to provide guidance and support. And they really don't have an idea what that's going to look like.
Exactly. And these contracts, what I'm speaking of is separate and apart from those regions. This is a contract that I have to sign or possibly the chair of the commissioners has to sign stating performance measures. What the county is going to do. And they've still not finalized what those actually are. They've given us a list for each area, and it'll be every area in the social services. Child support, Medicaid, I, everything. We have to meet certain performance measures. And if we don't meet them, we'll go into like a corrective action plan. And if you don't work that corrective action plan, the state could come in and
Almost like a private contractor comes in and starts.
They can take it over.
Take it, and then you have, but you have to pay, the county would have to pay.
If the state come in and took us, took something over, they'd send us a bill.
Well, I, I got a feeling there'd be a bill.
It's not going to come to that.
No, not here. I'm not, I'm not, I don't think any of this applies to us. I mean, I don't think we're the reason for this.
Oh, it was, um, Moore County, as you mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
That incident in Moore County is what prompted.
Have you heard of any other, uh, counties that are looking at partnering with us?
I've not heard of P. Not yet.
Fresh.
Yeah, not, because you know, when, um, they started the, um, impetus of where like the board could be dissolved and all that, there's many counties talking back and forth, wanting to do that, wanting to look into that. It's been very quiet, from what I've heard. I'm not.
Everybody's waiting on this to be finalized before they revisit that.
Exactly.
What I'm hearing from the state.
And I would, I would think that is exactly what it is because this is so fluid right now and there's such, such unknowns in, okay, what are we going to be held accountable for, that a lot of them are waiting on that. And then, as you said earlier, the funding as well. There's the funding.
And that's one thing that the advocacy groups statewide share, obviously the biggest issue with is if, uh, the regionalization occurs, who's going to fund the regional offices? Are they going to pull monies away from counties?
Probably.
Which has been discussed.
Yep. Or take our good workers away to, to staff them.
To create positions that are truly state-funded positions under our head.
Then they take our workers.
That's all we need is to have even more competition for our employees than we're already dealing with the other counties.
Exactly.
Get them away from us.
I know.
Uh, it's just, or private contractors taking employees, charging more, and then they're paying them for them.
But it's, oh, yeah. And as the more, more information I get on that, I will, um, share it with you and let you know.
But like I said, I think, I think it's coming, John.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of changes.
I have a strong suspicion.
For that as well.
How's the director of association doing?
Uh, not positive.
That's surprising.
Yeah, very concerned as to, um, how punitive the state is going to look at it. In other words.
Getting back to your performance measures, when you sign the contract, uh, one size does not fit all.
It does not.
And that's one of the shared, one of the largest issues that they have with the DSS and your state board. Is that those performance measures, you cannot compare us
No.
to the metro groups or the metro areas or the metro districts that they're going to have in court. Because we're a very small, as far as population.
We are.
About.
Uh, Mecklenburg DSS is, it's not even, it's not even comparable to a county like ours. But very concerned about how, what they're going to set them at, how punitive are they going to be about it? Of what, you know, just exactly what is the motivation behind it? Very, you know, worried about that.
Yeah, go ahead. This is our.
I'm going back to this V, uh, VPA cases.
Uh-huh.
Now that the numbers picking up, what, what opportunities does this allow for this age range, state in between? What, are they capable to get going through this? Are they capable to go to work and be productive? What are they?
They have to, they have to be doing something like that. They can't just, they have to be either in school, um, disabled, working a job. Um, they can, we can pay for them to stay in the dorm. They can go to school and we, that cost of care can go to help pay for them to stay in the dorm. Um, very, um, open for them. It's not as restrictive. We only have to see them once a quarter. Whereas, you know, obviously with our regular foster children, it's every month. We're seeing them every month. We only have, we make contact every month. It'd be a phone call, email, um, but we only have to see them once a month. So it, it is a, um, it's very profitable for them in terms of helping them get ahead in life and stuff. So, yeah, we're, and they have to have, they have to meet certain requirements. They can't just say, well, I'm going to sit back for three years and not do anything. They have to be working and going to school or something.
Do, do you have a set amount of funding for that, or is there added on? Do you get additional funding, or do we fund part of that?
It is, um, it is a line item in our budget, but that is refunded to us through the state at a hundred percent. So that, that part's good. So that was part of the deal when the state said, we're going to expand it to then. It wasn't going to be a cost of the care to the counties. Now, there's a cost to the county in terms of staffing. I mean, obviously there's staff time and stuff like that, but it, not a cost in terms of that line item. And you'll see it on, in my budget. You'll have it on there. It'll be a one line and it's spread out.
Let's see, I'm going on some sort of a program like the United States Army.
It's going to grow because I've already got the numbers from hell that are, the number of children that are coming off at age eighteen. And it's, it's, it's growing. And the more children that learn about it, which is good, they need, it's, it's available to them. They should use it. They're taking advantage of it.
How long do they have to be in foster care to be?
They have to age out.
They have to age out in the program?
Have to age out.
Okay. So they could have been there any like the time as long as they
Age out at eighteen.
When they turn eighteen. Okay. Any, any further information you'd like to share with us?
Today, unless you all do.
Pretty good, pretty good report. Uh, any thoughts or questions from the board?
How's it staffed? Are you fully staffed now or are you?
Um, right now, I have two opens. One is a, um, foster care supervisor. She's retiring. Sherlene Call. Said, see her go. She's retiring. And, um, we have an income maintenance caseworker position up. So other than that, you know, it's been holding. I've got one that is, um, I think another county's getting ready to take her. So one of my social workers, so.
Is it a county north of us?
Well, actually, it's the, um, county where Hickory is located. They're just, they're just the same. They're just the same as the county north of us in terms of why and how. So other than that, though, I mean, obviously we're in much better shape than we were.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty good, pretty good employee report there to have just a couple of spots open.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure you'll fill that supervisors.
Hopefully, hopefully from within.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we want to try to promote from within.
Vice Chairman Settle, anything they have? Okay, all right. John, excellent report. We really appreciate what you do. I think we've got one of the best DSS departments in, in the state. And I'm very comfortable with being overseen by the state and monitored. I think our numbers will be.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll do our, we can. We'll beat it.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Item H, uh, we, I don't think, we've had a financial update for, for a while.
No.
So we've got Jerry Shepherd with us, our finance director. Of course, Christopher Huffman's here too. Jerry's got a couple more reports he's going to do for us, I guess.
Well, this may be my last one.
Well, I think we'll just have to have one every month.
This is a bittersweet moment for me.
What do you think? Don't you think we should do this month later?
I will let Chris take over after this meeting. I wanted to do one more, so.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you letting me come and
Oh, yeah.
I'll give you a report.
It's a very important part of, of, of the county's operations is, is what you and your department do. I mean, taking in money, keeping track of everything, making sure we comply with all the regulations. I, it's just hard to really, um, be, just be fully aware unless you've been in this position to understand just how important the finance, uh, the financial end of managing the county is. And Jerry, you do a great job.
Thank you.
You, you've made this job. I've been here about ten or eleven years. He's been here longer than that. Now, it's, it's certainly been a comfort knowing you were back in that little corner office with that pencil.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I do appreciate that. I really do. Uh, well, what I'm going to be giving you a report on today is, is our fiscal year through January, which will be for seven months. We, by the time we sent this out, we didn't have all of our February stuff posted. So this will be a report through seven months, which will be through the month of January. If you look on page one, uh, at that time, we had a total of forty-six point six million dollars in the bank that we had invested somewhere. Uh, the middle portion of the page, you can see where, uh, that money belonged. Uh, thirty-eight point seven million belonged to the general fund. And then the other funds, you can see on down through there, uh, how much money each fund had. Uh, the bottom of the page shows you where we have the money invested. Interest rates thankfully are, you know, climbing. So, you know, last year, in our general fund alone, or year, year before last, we was getting like fifty thousand dollars a year on all this money and interest. This year, we're probably going to get three hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, we, we're seeing the increase in our interest rates as, which helps us when it comes to budgeting. But, uh, as I said, you can see at the bottom which financial institutions we have the money at. On page two, this is our property tax. And, uh, as you can see on the right column over there, that so through January, we had collected two-hundred-and-four thousand dollars more this year than compared to last year. And if you look at the bottom, uh, in the current fiscal year, at the, at the budget, we, uh, look, I mean, the way things are going, you know, we're going to collect what we budgeted. So we, we should collect every, every bit that we budgeted. And then on the next page, it's our sales tax. And this is something I'd want to spend just a minute more time on.
Please do.
Um, through, now, we did, we are showing you what we received on this report through the month of February, which is actually for collections that the state did in December. So, um, we, as you can see there, total collected, we have collected, in comparison, actual collections, we have collected three percent more, or two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars more this year than we did last year at the same time. So the sales tax trend is increasing. Um, if you'll, if you look down below though, if, about what we budgeted, you can see right now, we're collecting what, what we projected, what we budgeted. So, uh, we're just six thousand.
How much of an increase percentage-wise did you budget for this year?
We.
Sales tax, a couple, three percent?
Yeah, we did, we did, we did about a three percent increase.
Okay, yeah.
So it's, it's running on track with what we, what we planned.
All right.
But, but that being said, I still want to tell you that, uh, in the two thousand seven, eight fiscal year before the recession, we budgeted, uh, fifteen, fifteen million, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars to come in, uh, from sales tax.
Yeah.
Okay, fifteen, eight, ninety-six.
That was in two thousand and seven.
That was in two thousand seven, eight fiscal year.
Did you say you budgeted that or you actually got that?
Now, that's what we budgeted.
Okay.
We actually got fifteen million point, we got fifteen point eight eleven.
Oh, that's pretty close, yeah.
What we got. All right. This year, our budget is fifteen million, five-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. Ten years later, it's going to take us ten years to ever get back to the number that we was in the two thousand seven, eight fiscal year.
With the quarter cent.
And that's even with the additional quarter cent. Yes.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, if we hadn't have got that extra quarter cent, you know, we, we wouldn't be near.
Which is about, well, see through, through February, seven months. It's over a million dollars for, per year?
Yes.
For the whole year, it'd be over a million.
Yeah.
Wow. So we're still, might as well say, we're still one point five million or four million less in actual sales tax if you compare the exact same numbers.
Right, with, with that the quarter.
We're still one point five million less collected this year, projected, than we collected in two thousand seven.
Right. That is correct.
And I, I, I think we've been saying that occasionally over the, the years as we've looked at our budgets and talked about, you know, what we could afford to spend and that sort of thing.
Right.
But that's really, I mean, that kind of puts it on paper right there that we're, it's taken us ten years to get really not even back to where we were before. We had to do some significant cuts. And then a previous board raised taxes significantly to get us out of the hole.
Right.
And we've had to not spend too much money during all those years to allow our fund balance to increase. So we weren't in. So, we weren't in such a dire situation financially.
Right. And that's correct.
Yeah.
Anyway, I wanted to share that information with you. Then the next page, page four, there's really not a lot to say about that. Our EMS collections are not coming in, as you can see, as we have, as was budgeted. But I think when Mr. Morrison was here, he had planned to do some other, something different with the revenues. So, that's when we budgeted this, and then we didn't follow through with some of the plans that he had. So, next year, we will budget less for, for revenues coming in. But at the bottom of that page, you can see that, uh, our actual collections in revenues versus our actual expenses, we're still six point five million dollars ahead in revenues, but that's because, you know, Alex collecting property taxes. The majority of our property taxes in December. And so, that gives us, you know, we have that stockpile of money to get us through, through June thirtieth, when we, when we don't get a lot of, uh, property tax revenue coming in. And then on page five begins our fund, shows you what our, uh, it's our general fund revenues. And then page six starts the general fund expenses. And then if you go to page nine, that starts all of our other funds. It shows you what the revenues and expenses are through January thirty, thirty-first, for those that understand. That is my report.
If we come up short on collections at the end of the year based on budget projections for EMS, or is that something we're just gonna have to make up the difference? And does that require a?
It, no. What, what, what will happen will be, it'll just, it'll just, the portion that's needed to make that up will just come from fund balance. So, so I see, you know, it's still early in the year, but I do foresee using, using some fund balance this year.
Thirteen percent off right now. You know, we need to look at that a little bit closer.
We don't have a director. Switch directors.
That's right. We have an interim director, and we're in the process of looking at new director positions. Maybe that'll, there's something like that. Has you got any questions about the?
I wanna say, I wanna make a comment about, this may be Jerry's last presentation, but I certainly, you know, if I'm traveling around other counties around here, and you're highly thought of, and our community too, always did a really, really good job with our numbers and budget, and of course, working with John, and I'd go over there anytime and get an answer.
Thank you.
Certainly, I appreciate all the good work the county does, too, for the years of service that you've given.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And it was integrity and honesty and above board always. I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Big shoes.
Big.
Big shoes.
Big.
Got a Huffman coming back.
No, that's right.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right.
Well, I, I approve that financial.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
It's still, you never feel like you're out of the woods.
No, no, that's right. I mean, because you never know what's gonna happen.
And that, that's it. I, I think we always have to be mindful of what might happen in the future. The economy will not expand forever.
No, that's right.
Or we'll be a retraction, and we'll have to be in a position where we can hold our own until, so we have another recovery. So, it's just the nature of.
Coming back to your pencil remark, I see you got a pen. You really don't want your finance guy with a pencil.
Yeah, you shouldn't have to.
I'd bet you got a pencil.
Oh, yeah. I love my pencils.
Yeah, no rap.
So, thank you, guys.
Jerry, thanks so much. Yeah, appreciate everything. Yeah. John, item I is a North Carolina Department of Transportation Road Maintenance Approval.
Yes, Vice Chairman. We have a letter here from the DOT. It says, "This office is perceived to be in Form SR-1 requesting consideration of the addition of Angler Street State Maintenance. State maintenance system is required. County Commissioners demonstrate approval of this process." This is, uh, this is Angler Street. It is in West High, Resup, Illinois.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries. Send that on back to the DOT. Uh, item J, Purchasing Department, sale of surplus inventory. John Yates, our county manager.
Yes, Vice Chairman. The Wilkes County Purchasing Department requests approval upon the Wilkes County Board of Commissioners to sell the following surplus using the electronic alternate. As you can see, there's several vehicles on here. Most of them will not run, or there's certain, there's problems with them. There's a coal generator. Uh, there's a direct mobile satellite from the sheriff's department. And there's a Libby generator diesel from the sheriff's department. All this is not in working.
That's a lot of vehicles there. All of them about the same year, eight oh eights and all lines. All of them very close to two hundred thousand miles. They get about the same.
It's breaking in.
Yeah.
They wore out by that time.
Yeah. Those are some hard miles in Wilkes County, too. Curves, mountains. I don't think, people don't realize.
Now, we won't be in one responding to any.
No, no. And even our school buses with the salt and the brakes and the curves, and it's tough on them.
Always like to bring up, I've got a van that's four hundred thousand miles on it. When it had three hundred, I drove it to Mount Rushmore and back south to catch it. With three hundred thousand miles on it.
But you're not answering, you're not answering nine one one calls, though, in it, are you?
No, but.
Yeah, that's when it gets a little dicey, I guess.
Always like to bring up.
Is it a Chevy van?
It's a Nissan.
We know how tight you are. No problem. Okay, we've got all these vehicles. I think they're ready to, I think we're ready to get, ready to get rid of them.
Need a motion.
Motion, please. Thank you, Greg. Second, any second. All in favor, raise your hands. Sell them. Get them out of here. Thank you. No, yeah. Uh, old business. Anybody got any old business? Tony, John, Sarah? Anybody on the board, got any old business they wanna discuss? I think we've got some new business, John, don't we?
We do, and Jennifer Cooper here, with Rock, is here to present her proclamation.
Hi, Jennifer Cooper.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have our request to approve the proclamation for the two thousand eighteen March for Meals. On behalf of the seniors that we serve, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support of the senior nutrition programs in Wilkes County. Not only are we asking that you proclaim this month as March for Meals two thousand eighteen, we are also asking that you become a community champion by lending your time and your name to draw attention to senior hunger and our needs in Wilkes County. Often, we're overwhelmed by the financial bottom line that we find necessary to provide our services. But at this time, we ask you to consider the faces that are behind our bottom line. You know, the face of the senior who eats one meal a day, and that's the meal we provide. Uh, the faces of those that gather to socialize at our congregant meal sites and then return to empty homes. The faces of the families who depend on our Meals on Wheels delivery as that added sense of security to take care of their loved ones. And also, our staff and our volunteers, because we consider those clients to be family. And often, we deal with the loss of those clients like we would actual members of our family. So, those are the faces that we ask that you support by being a community champion during March, attending our kickoff breakfast on the nineteenth, maybe delivering a meal, or serving at the meal sites, or even visiting a homebound senior. And that is why we're asking that you will go ahead and proclaim March as March for Meals two thousand eighteen.
Okay, we have a proclamation to that effect. And again, I'd, I was gonna mention, I'm glad you did, that there's a kickoff at the senior center.
It'll be in the cafeteria.
In the cafeteria. It's at eight thirty, I believe, on the nineteenth. Is that correct?
It is, it is.
I plan to be there. Hope everybody else can attend.
If you've not RSVP'd, you still have time, but we'd love to have you. Rose Glen Village is gonna sponsor our breakfast. So, you'll have a little bit better than biscuits. They're gonna actually give us some good stuff.
Oh, God.
Maybe a little gravy.
Full gravy grits.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, these meals, it's such a good, good thing. I, I went in Austin, and, and, and some of those folks, it's like, the mailman used to be.
Mm-hmm.
It's on the guy they see, or the only person they see all day.
It is.
And, uh, it was, it's just, I just can't tell you how good it is. I mean, I know Keith's always been real supportive of it.
Yeah.
And as all of you have, but it's, uh, it's, it's really a worthwhile endeavor.
It is. And it's hard not to get attached. We do think of them as family, and we've had a, a rough year. Thankfully, our losses weren't what we expected because of the flu. We, we were a little afraid, but it's not been as bad as we thought it would be. Um, we did lose a few people from natural causes that our volunteers actually found, which is always hard. But, um, right now, we, you know, we're doing well. We're, we're, all of our routes are almost covered by volunteers. We, as of today, we have one hundred and sixty people waiting for meal delivery, just in the areas that we actually cover. Uh, we have another fifty-some that are outside our current service areas.
How many do you serve on an average day?
On an average day with Meals on Wheels, I think between the two meal sites that, that send out, I wanna say it's around, probably a hundred, maybe between a hundred and fifty, it kinda fluctuates. Um, and we constantly refill the empty spots through, from our waiting list. We do get some temporary, um, requests. Uh, maybe prior to nursing home placement, referrals from APS through DSS, that type of thing.
The, the, did you say a hundred and sixty on them? Did you say wait?
Waiting, waiting.
Do you need volunteers?
I do need one more volunteer driver to cover three days a week to cover all of my routes. We were in a, in a bad spot. I actually drove the entire month of November delivering meals every day.
The waiting list, is that due to funding or volunteers?
It can depend. If the route's full, if there's not funding, um, if we don't have enough volunteers to, that we feel like we can cover a full route. We have a route right now that we want to split. And so, that's the issue with needing one more volunteer. It's actually gonna take four people to cover those two routes, because the people we have working for us right now can only work certain days a week. So, it's actually taken four to cover two routes. Once we split that route, we can add some additional folks in and move them off that waiting list.
Again, we have such a big county, it's such a long.
It is. It's, it's huge. I can't remember the exact figures for mileage, but our mileage is ridiculous that, that we run.
Most of the ones on the waiting list shut-ins?
They, uh, the state requirement is six year over, and then essentially homebound, so that the only time they leave the home is maybe before a doctor's appointment, or if they're still able to attend church service, uh, maybe the beauty shop. Yeah, you still have to get your hair done, even if you're at home. So, that's, that's pretty much it, yeah. But there are a lot, we get a lot that just aren't able to stand long enough to cook an actual meal anymore. They're depending on microwave cooking.
Before I ask for a motion, I'm gonna read the last paragraph of this proclamation. I, Gary D. Loveens, is Chairman of the Wilkes County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March two thousand eighteen as the sixteenth annual March for Meals Month, and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National twenty eighteen March of Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. Can I get a motion? Motion, second. Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hands. So proclaimed.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Yeah, you sure can. I'm sorry.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, if you get funding based off people like mayors, commissioners, volunteers, is that, do you get increased funding for that?
It is basically, basically just.
Marietta, now she, and she could've been just goose-ing us up a little time. But now, if we all, if, if you got all of the elected officials to participate, I think she got a little bit of a grant.
There, there.
That's true, isn't it?
There is, um, there used to be, and I actually have not seen the paperwork on it yet for this year, but it used to be when they did mayors, I think you remember, it used to be mayors for meals.
Yeah.
If you did an event, you could submit that and get a, a small portion of a grant. I honestly cannot say that I've seen that paperwork this year, and they may not be doing it that, that anymore, because I know the last couple of years, they've actually also given us a grant to purchase branded items for our events, and they did not do that this year. So, um, but, you know, for us, how, because of the positions that, that you folks hold, people listen to you. You have the ear of the community. People respect you. And, and we know that the community picks up the paper or listens to the radio to find out what's going on at meetings and that type of thing. So, when you put your name and your face behind that, um, I think that's what helps us out a lot, because we do depend on some donations from the community. That offsets the cost, and we serve more people.
Good. That's great.
Do you appeal to churches?
We do. Um, the first year that I did this, which was three years ago, I actually wanted to start an annual giving campaign, and I sent letters to every church in Wilkes County I could find an address for. And I had a response from three churches, and one of those was my father's church, so I can't, so, two.
I'm just thinking, have, have you worked any with the associations, like Stone Mountain Mayonnaise Association?
I have not. Um, we do have two churches in the community that, well, they're Sunday School classes, not the, the entire church, but Sunday School classes that actually send a small amount each month, um, to, to help with home-delivered meals.
I believe if you work with the associations, you might have a better response.
I would love, one of the things that I mentioned in those letters was being open to coming to the church. You know, whether it's a Wednesday night business meeting or, or anything, to speak and, and just get the attention that we need, especially also for our congregant sites. Um, Maple Springs, for instance, that's a good-sized community, but we're struggling. Our numbers, our attendance is maybe ten people a day, and those folks have invited everybody they know. And we just, if we could get, you know, I know there are seniors in those communities, in those churches, that could benefit from our program. I just don't know what they're doing, other than I do get the response of, well, I'm just too busy since I retired. Or I've retired and I'm not doing anything, one or the other. So.
Well, that's, that's fine.
You just think with the number of churches that's in this county, and only a hundred and sixty on the waiting list, you would think, I know there's at least seven, is there seven hundred?
It's, it's a lot.
Now, you think you could fill that waiting list?
Um, we even have appealed as far as volunteer drivers, because I said, you know, a Sunday School class, if a Sunday School class got together, you wouldn't have to drive more than maybe once every few weeks, depending on how many people were in the class, if they all took turns. And the same way with donations. If, if churches would pull together and, and agree to volun, you know, support one person, we could start moving those folks off. Um, we actually, we ran ads for volunteer drivers for two months and got no response. And I put it on Facebook, and that's how I filled every single spot.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And it was awesome. We put it on the Wilkes County Road Alerts and Information Page, and I had people calling.
Social media is a way to, to reach these folks. That's the truth. I think you'd appeal to some associations when they have all the preachers in there.
And their meeting, and their associational meetings. Yeah.
Jen, thank for what you do and we'll see you on the, is it the nineteenth?
The nineteenth at eight thirty. Yes, we, we'll have coffee.
We'll come hungry.
Come hungry and we'll have coffee, thank you.
All right, we'll try to go on a route too. Thank you. Is there any more business to come before the board today? Anybody got anything? If not, Tony, I, no, easy, easy. The, we, we have several items for closed session. Tony, if you would like to word a motion to that effect, I'll-
Vice Chairman, the motion for today's closed session will be to govern the closed session to consult with the board's attorney to consider and head a direction with respect to one on more potential judicial or administrative actions and to consult with the board's attorney to protect the attorney from a request.
Motion by Commissioner Gamble is our second. Second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Appreciate your attendance. Dalton, have a great day.